Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. This is Eugene Bradley. I am the founder and CEO of the Silicon Valley Transit Users. It's January 5th, 2022. Tonight, we've got an interesting study session at the City of Santa Clara at their city council. In particular, they're going to discuss the proposed Santa Clara BART station. The video includes the council discussion and a presentation from DTA staff as well as public comment. So here is the video. Enjoy.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Councilmember Jane.
Oh.
Hello, Nora. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Hey, Nora. This is Michael Lu. Could you promote Allen Lee?
Yes. Okay.
Duh. I should have copied those two dots together, Michael. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, Bernice. No, we're ready. We're here. That's where we're in. We're ready when you are. We are our staff representatives.
We are ready in the booth whenever you are, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Santa Clara study session. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, I'm calling a meeting to order. So could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people and justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
May you please be seated.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the Statement of Behavioral Standards?
Yes, please.
The City of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as the presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gal indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation.
Thank you. So good afternoon and welcome, everyone. For today's meeting, the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow public participation in the safety of your own home or office. Members of the public can join via the link and/or call into the Zoom meeting displayed on our screen now. If you'd like to speak on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is being presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, and those are topics that are not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower each hand to ensure that members of the public are requesting to speak under the appropriate agenda items. You may also submit your comments on the e-comment feature available on the Santa Clara Legislature page or via publiccomment@santaclaracca.gov. And then the comments will be read into the record. So now we'll move on to the council agenda. A roll call assistance declare.
Councilmember what? Lobby?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shawal.
As an?
Councilmember party.
As an?
Councilmember Park. Councilmember Park.
Who is this little girl?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
And Mayor Gilmore.
I'm here. Thank you. So next, we're going to move on to our study sessions. I'm pleased to present that we are going to receive an update from the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, the BART Silicon Valley Phase Two Extension Project. So I don't know whether to turn this over to the city manager or representatives from DTA. So why don't we start with Michael Lu? Who will just introduce the topic, and then we'll hand over to our DTA staff members. And I do want to welcome and thank our DTA staff members to come and update the council and the public on the efforts of this extension project. And happy new year. Thanks. Yes, and happy new year as well to everyone. Director Lu?
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Appreciate that. So thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. I'm Michael Lu, Assistant Director of Public Work. So tonight, I had an study session on the Valley Transportation Authority's BART Phase Two Project. This project will provide BART service from the existing area of San Jose, next to the County Market, to San Jose to the proposed Santa Clara Station near Willcall Road and Coleman Avenue. Cities have been working with the DTA on the project for some time. And tonight, DTA staff have been managing will probably is here to provide an update on the project, including information about the overall effort to date, the design of the Santa Clara Station, public outreach efforts, the project schedule, and the involved next steps. So with that, I'd like to introduce the DTA staff that will be presenting tonight. So we do, on the call, we have Takis Alpia. He's the Chief BART Delivery Officer. Bernice Allen, she's the Director of External Affairs for this project. Erica Rokes, she's the Santa Clara Maintenance Lead. Greg Tibo is the Project Manager. And there, the DTA is going to be sharing their presentations tonight. So they were balanced, and then they'll want to get a run through the presentation. And of course, DTA and DTA for their core questions as they come up. So thank you. But that, I'd like to turn it over to Takis, who I believe is going to be the first out of the seat. So Takis, over to you.
Michael, thank you for your kind introduction. Happy New Year to you and everybody, all the staff in Santa Clara, Madam Mayor. And happy new year to you and the rest of the city council.
Thank you, Takis. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you for hosting it. And Madam Mayor, you remember, I came before you in the city council a year ago when we executed, we did execute, we were working on the master agreement.
Right, right.
Yep. A lot of great work since then, as you know well. And I wanted to acknowledge the staff, your city staff. They've been working with us nonstop throughout the year. We did a lot of work together. I'm very sure you have been well briefed. And they helped us in different design issues and access issues, and of course utilities, and everything is included in a project like that. For that, you know my Madam Mayor, I've been doing this job for 41 years. My last big project in the Bay Area is the 11 miles extension from Daly City to San Francisco International Airport, Midbury, and Birmingham. For that, to me, is the debut another one to do here, and I'm very excited. I would just to get to construction for that. If everything goes okay, hopefully by the end of this year, Madam Mayor, we will see construction going on for these great projects and so on. Like Michael said, that I have with me too tonight, our Director of External Affairs, Bernice Allen. I have our Project Manager, Greg Tibo. And then, of course, Erica Rokes is here. She's actually doing a fabulous job coordinating, being doing us in the city and so on. For that, nothing for me to say at this moment. I will lay back and wait for your questions later. I pass it to Bernice to take you through the project, to tell me where we are, what's the status. Knowing you, Madam Mayor, I know you're going to have quite a few questions. For that, we'll be for you.
Thank you, Takis. We appreciate it.
For you, Bernice.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for giving me this opportunity. I'm always very excited and enthusiastic to be able to present updates on this project, which is, to me, just one of the most exciting parts of my career. So let's talk about our agenda. We're going to talk about three main things today. Next slide, please, Erica. I'm going to first begin and give you an overall update on the project, and I'll address some specifics in that update, especially in light of the article that just appeared in the paper today, in the Santa Clara paper, because I want to be very clear about what the project is. We're going to expand. Erica is going to go through some of the city coordination efforts, the extensive efforts I should add. And then, at the very end, we're going to talk a little bit about Champions Rideaway Designation, what some of the next steps might be related to that roadway. Next slide, Erica. So the BART Silicon Valley Phase Two Project. We, back in June of last year, 2020, we completed the Phase One Extension. That is that orange section in the upper right-hand corner of the diagram. That was a 10-mile, two-station project. And service commenced, and it's slowly picking up. Obviously, it's been impacted by COVID. The light blue line is the tunnel portion of the six-mile, four-station project, the BART Phase Two Extension Project. The dark blue on both ends is the above-ground portion of the six miles, five miles of the subway, and a little bit more than a mile is above ground. The orange-red square in the upper left is the actual Santa Clara Station, and the light orange portion is the rail yard portion. So as you can see, the BART project, the Phase Two project, includes the four stations as identified, the Santa Clara Station, the Duran Station, Downtown Station, and the 28th Street Little Portugal Station. It also includes, there are two tiny little squares at 13th Street and at Stockton Avenue. Those are in between Santa Clara Station, Duran Station, and that's the Stockton Avenue Mid-Tunnel Ventilation Facility. And then there's another one between the 28th Street Little Portugal Station and Downtown. Also included in this project and essential to the rail operations is the New Hall Maintenance Facility. Next slide, please. So we have been working speedily and judiciously on the procurement process to deliver this project. This project is being delivered through four major contracts. The first one being the system contract. We have not had a significant amount of interaction with the city because most of those elements are within the tunnel, so there's not a lot of involvement in either of the cities really on what occurs. It's really the systems and communications to actually operate the system. The tunnel and track work contract is the largest of the four contracts, and we issued that RFP in September. If you see that whole red copy there, that is because the City of Santa Clara was involved in some of the elements of that contract. We had one-on-ones meetings completed and actually received that proposal. We received proposals from three bidders in December, and we anticipate that largest contract in spring of this year. The other very relevant station to the city, contract to the City of Santa Clara is what we call Contract Package Three. That's the New Hall Yard and Santa Clara Station. The draft RFP is under development, and we are going to be coordinating with the city for review as first quarter. That will be a critical element, getting that feedback on the RFP, and we anticipate awarding that contract summer of 2023. The other station's contract, that's Contract Packages Four, that is for the other three. We call them underground stations. It's really an underground boarding platform with above-ground station presence. And we have the Statement of Qualifications under review right now, and we're working on the draft RFP for that as well. This big, oh, it's fine. We can go back to that large. That is an example of a tunnel boarding machine, just to give you an idea of the size and magnitude of what a tunnel boarding machine is like. And that tunnel boarding machine will bore a tunnel large enough to fit the trackways for both directions of travel. Now, next slide, please. This is our framework to completion. It really is our guiding element. And as you can see, we started the procurement process, that's our contracting process, with a request for industry feedback. That was how we got a call from the delivery experts and project experts throughout the world on how we were going to develop these contract packages and the approach to delivery for this project. Then, our next step in the process was to get requests for qualifications to make sure that we had qualified bidders for the contracts. Right now, we are in the request for proposals process. And then you can see that with that first green triangle, with that CP2 package, that we'll start with our notes to proceed on that first contract in the middle of this year. The darker blue is actually the construction, and that commences from mid-2022 to middle of 2028. And then, in 2028, we begin the system testing and integration with BART with a passenger service delivery date of sometime in 2030. Next slide, please. We celebrated a very, very significant milestone for this project back in October. We have applied through funding through the Federal Transit Administration's Expedited Project Delivery Program. The main premise of this program is to bring public benefits to the public sooner. The application project historically to get federal funds is a pretty long, arduous process. We are the first agency, and this is the first project, to participate in this expedited delivery program. In October, we received notice through what was called a letter of intent, and that basically was the federal government's announcement to DTA that they intend to federally fund this project. In that letter, there is an amount of up to $2.28 billion, or 25% of the project cost, whichever will be less. A huge testament that was to the merits of the project and the FTA's confidence in how the delivery management of this project is being executed. That LOI, Letter of Intent, is eligible and infect for two years, and that allows us to advance the project to procure long-leading items like the tunnel boarding machine and then get more cost certain bids and more cost certain costs on the project overall. And ultimately, within that two-year period, we're working to get a full-fitting grant agreement. And that is really the amount and the term and the distribution for the parolee of the project. Next slide, please. I'm going to have Erica Rokes walk you through the station elements and the access efforts that have been conducted. This is a overhead view of the station, and she's going to take you through all the elements of the station design and layout.
Thank you, Bernice. So this map, just to orient us as we get started, shows the Santa Clara Station and New Hall Maintenance Facility area. Along the top of the map, you'll see the New Hall Maintenance Facility, which will stretch from New Hall Street in San Jose to Broca Road in Santa Clara. The five-mile tunnel will come up to ground level at the south end of the yard near the M in the maintenance facility label. The end of line is Santa Clara Station, shown in the upper right on the image, will be above BART train storage tracks and just south of Broca Road. Across from the station will be the future gateway crossings development. And Champion's Way, which extends today from Coleman Avenue to Wanda Way, will be extended to Broca with the new development and the project. The Santa Clara Station is the end-of-line station for the Phase Two project and will be adjacent to the Santa Clara Caltrain Station in the west. The station includes vehicle parking, bicycle facilities, and a connection to multiple rail and DTA bus lines on the west side of the tracks via the existing pedestrian undercrossing. As you can see, the site for the station is very constrained. DTA has explored numerous options to get to the current configuration that accommodates the design constraints that we have. Some examples of constraints are the configuration of the yard and storage tracks. We tested many different configurations to achieve an upgrade entrance to the station, but we're not able to do so within the available footprint. That means that in order to access the station, we would either have to go over or under the station platform. We selected an elevated concourse as its only station on the extension where there could have been an above-ground concourse. We wanted to take advantage of that from the passenger experience perspective. We wanted to maintain an easy connection for passengers transferring from transit services on the west side of the tracks. So we aligned the entrance concourse with the existing pedestrian undercrossing, which reduces the walking distance and travel times from origin to destination to the west. Being this station being an end-of-line facility, there are several service zones and backpass requirements that do exist at other stations. Their position is critical to the functioning and operation of the train system overall. Because of space constraints to accommodate all essential elements for an operational BART station and the maintenance facility, it was extremely challenging to fit the required operational elements in the existing station footprint. Significant deadline effort went into determining the station, the current configuration, and the current design is able to accommodate all the required station and yard elements and meet the project requirements. As Bernice mentioned earlier and Takis mentioned, we've worked with the city and stakeholders on access as well as station aesthetics and incorporated architectural features based on feedback received, which we'll go on to a little bit more in a little bit. Here's a cross-section of the current concept of the station. Unlike the other three stations Bernice mentioned, Santa Clara Station concourse will be elevated, and the platform will be at ground level, similar to the Warm Springs BART station. Passengers will either enter from Champion's Way, which is shown where the number one is on the image, or the pedestrian undercrossing, which is the number six, and use vertical circulation, which is the number two, on either end to get to the elevated concourse, which is number three. After moving over the storage and transfer tracks, which are labeled as number five on the image, folks will pass through the fair gates, and passengers will use vertical circulation to get down to the platform, which is number four. Now, we're going to watch a short conceptual video of the Santa Clara Station to get a sense of what the passenger experience will be like.
This video of Santa Clara Station provides a conceptual representation of what a future rider might experience. This is the entrance to the station on Champion's Way, with a parking garage on the left above BART train storage tracks. Stairs, escalators, and elevators will provide access to the elevated concourse.
The volume is very low, and I'm not sure that it's only me.
To continue to the BART train.
All right, let me see if I can.
I can hear it, but it's still, it's still kind of.
Very low.
Yeah.
All right, let me see if I can increase the volume.
Even better. Now you have video proof.
Could we start over? This is a good video.
Yes, yes, honey. Let me increase it here and.
Jack it up. There you go. There you go.
It's concert loud now. Okay.
Was that too loud?
No, no. Let's go. Let's go.
You turn left and pass through the. This video of Santa Clara Station provides a conceptual representation of what a future rider might experience. This is the entrance to the station on Champion's Way, with a parking garage on the left above BART train storage tracks. Stairs, escalators, and elevators will provide access to the elevated concourse. To continue to the BART train, you turn left and pass through the fair gates. There are a series of stairs, escalators, and elevators. This view takes us to the southern end of the concourse. From here, we can access the station's platform, which is at the same level as the Caltrain tracks and the New Hall Maintenance Facility. From here, BART will provide reliable service to open in just over an hour.
One question.
All right, so that's so you can feel a little bit of what the passenger experience would be like. We'll go into some of those elements and efforts in just a minute that we went through. But before we get there, wanted to touch briefly on the New Hall Maintenance Facility. It will be constructed to accommodate the new service provided by the Phase Two project. As I mentioned previously, the facility will be relocated, northeast of the rural corridor on the former Union Pacific New Hall Yard that DTA purchased in 2004. The roughly 40-acre facility will include storage for BART cars as well as some additional, including maintenance shops, train car wash building, and other shops. Now, I'm going to walk through some of our city coordination efforts. Over the past year, we've been closely coordinating with the city on several areas, some of which we'll get into more details on the following slides. The development and cooperative agreements, the city review of draft request for proposal documents, as Bernice highlighted earlier, station access and circulation, the construction education and outreach plan, the construction transportation management plan, and the emergency services coordination plan, as well as the city was involved in our design review committees. Working together with the city, we executed the DTA's City of Santa Clara Master Agreement in October 2020 and the first cooperative agreement in July of '21. Cooperative Agreement One affirmed our construction impact mitigation through the development of the construction outreach management program, which I'll touch on more in a minute. Reimbursement of city services supporting pre-RFP activities and defined things such as construction standards, city review of plans and specs, and environments. We're in the process of developing the Cooperative Agreement Number Two, which defines pre-construction survey of city infrastructure, design submittal review and review periods, construction inspection, and resting review, and will notification for construction completion and acceptance. In addition, it will cover reimbursement for city services associated with design review and construction inspection and testing. We anticipate bringing the agreement to council later this year, in the next couple of months. This past summer to early fall, DTA hosted a series of community engagement efforts focused on the look and feel of the stations, including the customer visual experience, material finishes, entrance areas, and areas for potential public art. We convened design review committees for each station area that included a mix of local business associations, neighborhood groups, advocacy organizations, education institutions, and city staff from each station area. The Santa Clara DRC or Design Review Committee included the old quad reclaiming our downtown and city staff. The Silicon Valley Central Chamber of Commerce and Santa Clara University were invited to participate as well, but unable to attend. Following this series of design review committee meetings, DTA hosted online engagement and in-person pop-ups to garner input on preferred concepts that were developed through the process. As you can see on the slide here, we've got a lot of interaction with our social pinpoint website. For the Santa Clara Station, we had over 380 unique users who filled out more than 90 surveys and left more than 75 comments. Based on that input we received, then we heard that the overall preference for the Santa Clara BART station is to have a station that's an inspiring gateway to an innovative and diverse city. There's a collective desire for the station to be architecturally significant. A dynamic facade treatment that moves at different times of the day is also desired, as is visibility into the station from the outside. Less reflective wood-like colors and terracotta-colored concrete reminiscent of mission architectural themes is also desired. So are color accents in the concourse and platform flooring. The following images represent the preferred look and feel concepts that were identified through this process. This view is looking from Broca Road. It's on the far left side of the image, and so we're looking from southeast. On these renderings here, you can see the terracotta-colored concrete and color accents in the concourse flooring.
One question.
In addition to the construction education and outreach plan, that I'll talk on more in a minute, DTA gathers input through various meetings, working groups, committees, and other one-on-one briefings. DTA convenes quarterly community working group meetings that are open to the public. And if interested, we encourage you to. We're also happy to present in any community or neighborhood meetings. The image on the top right is from a tour that we took with members of the Santa Clara Community Working Group and city staff a couple of years ago. Oops. A BART's Concord Maintenance Facility to give a better idea of what to expect of the future New Hall Maintenance Facility. The BART team spent a lot of time with us and our tour group to answer questions and show us all their equipment and let us hear what it sounded like so that community members would be put at ease and aware that there was not any complaints from the neighbors in that area on noise levels and that the neighbors had a direct line of communication with the maintenance facility staff. Light maintenance happens at Concord and will also occur at New Hall, whereas the heavy maintenance work happens at the Hayward Facility. DTA has developed and will implement the construction outreach management program to meet our environmental commitments. The purpose of the COM is to minimize and reduce construction-related transportation impacts on the community and to inform the public and other stakeholders of the construction schedule and associated activities. The COM includes three plans. The construction education and outreach plan, which lays out how we communicate with the public during construction. The construction transportation management plan, which documents how we coordinate circulation and access for all modes during construction. And the emergency services coordination plan, which documents how we coordinate with local emergency services to minimize impact to their response times during the project. We wanted to touch briefly on the truck haul routes that are included in the draft construction transportation management plan. In the 2018 final environmental document, DTA cleared various track routes for truck hauling, including Broca Road and Coleman Avenue in the City of Santa Clara, which you can see in Goldenrod on this map. During, you hear, the DTA owned. During, you hear that the VTA-owned New Hall Yard is hatched in purple, where the maintenance facility and the station will be located with Broca Road on the north end and New Hall Drive in the city of San Jose on the south end, being the two main access points into the yard. Truck haul routes were designed, are designed to provide the most direct route to the freeways that connect them to their origins and destinations, whether they're hauling away items or bringing in items. We did identify adverse and significant unavoidable impacts to vehicular traffic by cyclists and pedestrians during construction in our environmental document. We've heard from the community and city staff, as well as experienced ourselves, the longstanding traffic issues on Broca Road due to the Costco. VTA is working with the city on the utilization of Broca Road for truck hauling, and more details will be fleshed out during the development of the detailed construction transportation management plans once the contractors are onboard. Next, I want to talk about station access and circulation. I wanted to touch on the history of where we've, we've been to get here today. Over March of 2019, the project worked with the city and other agency partners to develop station access concepts for the Phase Two stations. This process explored various access and circulation configurations and developed station-specific access principles to guide further station design. In 2020, the project's engineering was advanced and through coordination with Bart, some changes were made to configurations, primarily revolving around track and platform configurations as well as refining entrance locations. Following these design updates, the project created a change both cities to advance the design of city facilities required from project access and circulation, which included multiple workshops as well as a series of biweekly meetings with VTA planning and transit operations as well as city staff to refine, identify how the project could move forward with access and circulation. During the technical biweekly meetings we've had with the city since July for the station, we just established a shared understanding of the basis of design of the station and discussed state access and circulation features. The concepts developed in collaboration with city staff are documented in a basis of city facility design memo, which will be included as part of the contract package RFP documents. Both the city and VTA have provided comments, and we've resolved, worked through those comments, and we're, we'll be including it in the RFP. The concepts that I'm going to share today are included in the contract document as a basis of design intended for bidding purposes. Once onboard, the design bill contractor will be required to coordinate with VTA and the city to finalize the design. So the next couple of slides will be based off this graphic, so I wanted to orient us all before we dive in. So the Bart Station is at the top of the page with the maintenance facility to the left with Broca Road on the right. The numbers on the slide represent various access and circulation elements being considered for the station that we'll go into more details on the following slides. I did also want to mention that we presented this to the City of Santa Clara Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee last October. The ramp from Broca Road down to the pedestrian undercrossing is planned to be widened and straightened to accommodate increased pedestrian traffic between the Bart and the Cal Train station and the other trains on the west side of the tracks. At the bottom of the ramp, an elevator and stairs is planned to provide direct access to the concourse level for patrons traveling from origins to the west. A new roadway, Champion's Way, is planned to be constructed to provide access to the station. The new section of Champion's Way will extend from Broca Road to Wando Way. The section from Wando Way to Coleman Avenue was recently constructed by Hunter Storm as part of the Coleman High Line Office Park. The roadway, the new section of roadway will be constructed in collaboration with the adjacent gateway crossings developer and will include curb space to facilitate passenger pickup and drop-off in front of the station. A two-way separated bike way is also planned along the side of Champion's Way, fronting the station from the ramp at the end of Broca Road all along the station frontage. It would connect, passed on Champion's Way to the existing bike facility network on Wando Way and the existing Champion's Way. A new intersection of Broca Road and Champion's Way is planned to include high-visibility crosswalks, directional curbs ramps for bikes and mobility impaired users, as well as striving for this class four separated bike way. Where the future Champion's Way bends is the station's parking garage ramp. At this location, always stop control is planned to be provided with crosswalks to provide safe pedestrian and bicycle access across the intersection with the parking garage. In front of the station entrance, Champion's Way is planned to include a raised speed table, which is, will include high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian bowl valves, and rectangular rapid flashing engines. The raised crossing is planned to align with Chastain Place, the planned pedestrian passo that bisects the gateway crossings development. In addition, bike parking is planned to be provided at the station. From my thought, I'm going to turn it back over to Brittany to talk about Champion's Way. Hope Brittany's around you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as Erica showed in the drawing, Champion's Way will be built in collaboration with Hunter Storm and the Bart Project, depending on the phasing of each of the projects. So I wanted to go back on a little history and why we're looking at possibly VTA requesting the designation of Champion's Way, that Champion's Way be a public roadway currently is a private roadway with public access. Giving a little history, in June 2018, we did a city study, city council study session. We, in June 2018 through September 2019, determined that it was going to be feasible to include the station and facilities on a more condensed footprint, not utilizing the property where the current Apple facility is. We did another workshop for the city of Santa Clara Staff and Council, sharing that shifted location, the one that we're showing today. And we, from September 2019 through January of last year, we advanced to ten percent design. And now we are at the current station configuration, and this is the configuration of the project that is the federal project that we're advancing. And so as such, the access to the station has changed from the primary access on the former, designed from Broca Road to now Champion's Way. Next slide, please. So this is a little history on the sections of Champion's Way. If you look in the green right there, that is the part that Coleman High Line constructed from Coleman Avenue to Wando Way. And that portion, part of it is in the city of San Jose, city limits, and it's constructed as a public street. And then the remainder part is within the city of Santa Clara. In July of 2019, for the purple, the city of Santa Clara Council approved the gateway crossings with Champion's Way as a private roadway. And like I said, that was when we were still working on the exact station configuration and access to the station. And then the golden rod portion is the city feels portion, and that's undesigned. Next slide, please. So as I stated, VTA is requesting that Champion's Way be designated as a public right of way, and we plan on returning to the council in early 2022 with options for a discussion on how that might occur and the importance to the project of why we are making that request. So just wanted to let you know that this is a forthcoming discussion that we would like to have. So the next steps will be returning to the council sometime later this year to discuss the Champion's right of way designation. Also, to come back for that cooperative agreement, cooperative agreement number two, that really dictates the interactions during the construction and the inspections and review schedules. Wanted to share some of the project milestones. As mentioned earlier, in the contracting procurement schedule, spring of 2022, we plan to issue a notice to proceed on the tunnel and track work contract, that's the largest contract in the project. We also plan to issue a notice to proceed on the systems contract, that's the activities that mainly occur within the tunnel. Mid to late 2022, the tunnel and track work specific CTMP, once the progressive design builder identifies the means and methods, will be doing contract-specific construction transportation management plans. And then early 2023 is when the early works and activity within the new hall yard property will commence. And happy to answer any questions. We had gotten some questions prior and we have some written responses, but happy to answer and give some more high-level answers to those questions for those that we have some more detailed answers to.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. So that's, that concludes your presentation, is that correct?
That is the end of our presentation.
Thank you, it was a, it was a really good presentation. I think we got a lot of information that we didn't have before and our public didn't have before, so. And I liked the video as well, so it gives you an idea of what, what these things are going to look like and how, you know, this station would be different from some of the other stations. We're going to start with our city council questions and then maybe we can get those answered, then we're going to go to the public and, and then do some follow-up questions. So, so thank you very much for this detailed presentation. All right, we'll start with Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious, is the tunneling happening from both ends? And there are all those trucks that are moving dirt from the tunnel. What, what is the period of time that they will be moving dirt? Because it seems like if you start tunneling from the other side, you won't be removing dirt from this side for a long time. But I had a number of other questions.
So as far as Brittany's goes, the way we do it here at our city council meetings in order for everyone to have a chance to answer, get questions answered, we have the individual council members just list all of their questions, and then we're hoping someone on your staff then at the end. I know it might get a little cumbersome, but if then you can come and answer all of our questions and then, and then we'll go to the public. So for the council members, you know, you know the drill here, we get all of our questions out at once and then we'll look to staff and then we'll have follow-up questions after that. So go ahead, Councilmember Jane, get your questions out.
Okay, happy to. So I know you applied to the FTA for this project and there's an EIR for this project. So at what point are those finalized and the station design cannot be changed? At what point is that all baked in? I'm really concerned about bikes and scooters getting from one side of the tracks, all of the tracks into San, Santa Clara. So, you know, if I'm running late for the Bart Station, I would like to be able to ride my bike straight through from Santa Clara to the Bart Station, put my bike on the, on the train and get to over. So right now, I have to go on a handicap ramp, which is extremely inconvenient. So I would be very interested in having a bike ped tunnel or bridge to get across. And I don't know how much of that is baked into the design already. And then since the whole project will be completed till 2029, the station, it seems like the station design will be completely done this year. So is that true? And at what point will the public have a chance to put more input into that design? Finally, I had an issue about the parking. It's only five hundred spots, and I know you said you had limited space, but I was wondering if you could build over the maintenance yard, open the tracks there to add more parking? And whether, we don't know what autonomous vehicles are going to be like, but whether that parking could then be repurposed later, we could design it to be repurposed for some other uses. And finally, you have that big concourse, it would be nice to have a coffee shop or some snack bar in there for people waiting for the train, just like you have in San Francisco at the Cal Train. Because it's a big wide concourse, as I could see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you. I go with Councilmember Jane said, but I was also looking at that, it looked like it was open, even though you're coming, from the video, you're coming up the stairs or the escalator or the elevator. But that didn't look like that was a climate control part, it was open. And I was wondering also what would the view be for anyone coming or going, it wasn't real clear from that. I would agree that furniture or some kiosk or something, some abilities for people to have services. I also, is there a restroom? When I looked at that, they also, the big concern BPAC had, and I have in my notes, was understanding how the bike lane connects into getting into the station? And if they have to pass through or go through what kind of traffic? Because you talked about the ramp going up to the parking garage and it wasn't really clear if, how that was, that flow was going to work. Also, the idea of drop off and pickup for possible autonomous vehicles or Uber or Lyft or taxis, is there some kind of plan for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chahal?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. And I can dwell on the bridge between the Bart Station as well as the Cal Train. That is very important, like as Councilmember Jane mentioned. So what is the feasibility of that, one way or the other, like that would really help? Then, I know initially there was a concept of Apple Building being utilized by the VTA. Is that Apple Building out of the way? Like no feasibility of getting that? If that is there, can extra parking, additional parking, or anything additional which may need for the station can be accommodated there in case that is still open to the discussions, basically. Second thing is concourse shopping. I know this may be the very initial design video you presented, but we would love to have some concourse shops, like as Councilmember mentioned, coffee shops or some consumer-related shops, so that it make it more lively, not just standing over there without any aesthetics, basically. And some, something else to do during that, for that. Traffic, I know without any Santa Clara Station, without the full development and the new development which is coming between Champion's Way and the Broca, our traffic on that Costco is really, really bad. I have been contacted by the Costco as well as many residents that what they can do. And Costco, like you see thousands of people are there, there are only one exit from that Costco. And that is, right now, it's emergencies or if something happens at that road connecting the Costco from Broca is always dark, then those are really serious issues from health point of view and from the safety point of view. So is there anything we can work out, something on that? Because Broca and, and Broca makes a right turn, right, right next to the trains, and there are two other buildings over the Apple Building and there is another building and the city has their water tanks. Is there a feasibility of connecting through that Broca to Costco somehow? And so that they have at least two exits from the Costco and there can be some mitigation on traffic from the Costco? So that, that is very important for me. One other thing is, you mentioned that it will be starting for passengers in 2030, whereas the project will complete by 2028, if I heard right. So why there is a gap of almost two years? I don't know, whether it's two years or a year and a half or whatever, why is that so much gap between that? Actually using it and when the project finishes? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the really good presentation. So a lot of, I kind of pulled me off of what my prior councilmembers were saying, and I'm going to repeat a lot of the questions I did ask when we had little sessions, when we had other councilmembers there. As well as to make sure that everyone is on the same page and hearing what I said, to be transparent. So my big thing about the thoroughfare, you know, I mentioned it in our prior reading about, you know, vehicle crossing. I know that recently during Costco, they've been having a, I guess a private company, I think it's called VAS, they've been out there directing traffic because it's been so bad. I see the line of cars getting so bad onto Coleman, as well as back. I see the line of cars getting so bad onto Coleman as well as backing up to the Coleman interchange. And I've, you know, I know there's been concern about the feasibility and the cost of connecting Broca to Benton. And that is a concern I've had for a long time, looking at a proper thoroughfare as well as a bike crossing, which Councilmember Jane brought up as well. I think that's important because we need, I think we need to have a way to kind of connect the city of Santa Clara to this area that a lot of people feel that isn't Santa Clara. And I think that it needs to be represented and it also needs to have that kind of connection. Going back to also the traffic, it's just so bad. I mean, if you have a BART station there, you have Costco, it's going to be a nightmare. And I know our residents deal with that nightmare. So we don't want to make it worse for our residents and we don't want to make it bad for also San Jose residents as well. We kind of want to make things more harmonious rather than conflicting. The other thing I have is, which I brought up as well, I want you to answer for our residents so they understand, is I've been hearing rumors about this might not even happen one day, that they really want to access, which I really, really hope not. So can you please clarify that for our residents? Because a lot of them are asking me those questions. And I said, well, stay tuned for January 5th. You'll get some answers. You know, you got questions, we got answers. At the same time, the end of the line, is this considered the official end of the line? Or is there going to be options for future expansion? Because I know back in 2010, in 2009, the big sell for Levi Stadium was to bring BART up to Levi Stadium. So I always thought and envisioned that it might ever happen in the future. So can you elaborate a little bit on that? As if that was ever in the pipeline in the past? At the same time, if it is a possibility for future expansions, if we do go to that method? Because I just want to make sure that our community is connected by alternate means of transportation, especially when trying to get views off the road. But those are basically my questions, reiterating what I talked about with you guys in our little study session with just a couple councilmembers. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, you are on mute.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker. Councilmember Lautenbaum?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I've got a couple of questions. Number one, with the planned construction that's supposed to start towards the end of this year, it sounds like there's basic construction and then the bulk of the construction is supposed to start next year. What exactly, what kind of construction is going to start this year? And compared to next year? Looking at the video, it's a great video of what the station will, you know, look like. But I was wondering about approximately how far of a walk will it be from the entrance to the platform? I mean, it looked like it was, it can be a bit of a walk and so I was just curious, just, I mean, I'm glad to know that there will be escalators and elevators. But at the same time, wondering about approximately how far will it be from the entrance to the train platform? Let me see. Thank you so much for the outreach. I'm really happy to see that you had such a great response from the residents of Santa Clara. I mean, it just shows that there is a great interest here and how important it is that this train station happened. So it's great to see that there was all that interest from your social outreach. And then, let me see, I guess it's on page 19. It looked like there was possibly the MyVTA SMS alert. So I was, I didn't hear, you know, how that might be utilized by people waiting for the trains. And let me see, I had a couple of questions I wrote down. Okay. There was the discussion about trucking the dirt. And so I was wondering if there was ever any discussion about, because of the concern of traffic and pedestrians, whether or not, if there was any consideration to trucking it out via train versus trucking it out physically on a truck? So would that potentially be a consideration? And then finally, you mentioned at the beginning that there was an article on BART and that you would be addressing some of the statements or addressed in the article. So I was wondering if you did address them during your presentation and if not, if you could. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Park.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Most of the comments that I have have already been raised, but I just want to reiterate. Bicycle access, scooter access. Other places, I see that there are ramps where you can walk your bicycles up the stairs, but I don't really know where the stairs are here. I see a lot of escalators, elevators, but I think that stairs would be a really good option as well. I am concerned about people who are using BART to travel. So they may have suitcases, they may have children, strollers. I don't know what that looks like. Concerned a lot about traffic from Coleman, especially during construction. How we actually run simulations on what the traffic would look like on busy days, especially during the holidays where travel and shopping may be really busy. I want to know, make sure that we have allowances for cell phone and car pickup areas. Again, I'm looking, thinking about San Jose Airport where you have the cell phone areas, you've got your Uber, Lyft and other, you know, car pickup areas. I'd like to know if we have a plan for shovels to in front of the airport or if there will be other services that we could get up. Also concerned about restrooms and shops. As a weekly Caltrain rider, I appreciate the Forest Street Station in San Francisco. But that's also in San Francisco. We have cafes and other shops in close to our city. Can we be better than that? Like I would like to not just look for a train station aesthetic, perhaps the inside of an airport or maybe a mall. I don't know, you know, what we can do there. But in some cases, you know, people may be waiting at a BART station for a little while, especially if it's at the line and especially if they're coming from the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I see that the maintenance yard is smaller than we had originally, years ago, anticipated. We were looking at, and I know VTA was looking at and had actually environmentally cleared some of the surrounding properties. And it was, I thought it was going to be envisioned as a much bigger, you know, end of the line maintenance yard and area. So my question is, what kind of actual maintenance is going to be happening in that much smaller sort of footprints on the maintenance, in the maintenance yard? And if there's, for some reason, like no financing or if there's, if something happens and the Santa Clara station gets eliminated, what happens to that maintenance yard? Does it end up at your own station? Or I think my question really is, how critical is it to have the Santa Clara station? I'm hoping it's very critical and it needs to happen, right? That's the answer I'm looking for. But how critical is the Santa Clara station for the overall operations of BART? And because I think that will really sort of lead the way in terms of getting the station done and, you know, not being at the end of the line and then running out of money. And then, of course, naturally, the Santa Clara station gets deleted out. So I think I'm looking for more assurances that Santa Clara is important and needs to happen for the overall operations of BART. Because I think having a station in Santa Clara is really critical for us in the long run. And hopefully it will be extending, you know, into the future of the peninsula where it needs to go. And then I have a question and I don't know if it's for the VTA staff or for our city staff. Is, there's a lot of questions and comments from my colleagues here about other things that are happening in the area, like traffic and ingress egresses and all those types of things. So how much of those type of peripheral issues revolve around our discussions with VTA? And how much revolve around our own decisions as a city? So, or are they combined together into one, you know, into one big project? Because there's a lot of things that people have brought up that are not, that don't have, they'll be a result of the, there's some existing conditions now, but there's going to be a result of having the BART station there. It's just going to amplify those existing conditions. But how much is on VTA and how much is under the jurisdiction of our city and our own, our own decisions? And I think that's it for now. So I know there's 102 questions there for everyone. So let's get started with either our city staff or VTA staff.
Madam Mayor, I missed one question. May I add that?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So one question now that we are planning this thing and VTA is part and parcel of, whole of a plan. My question is, what is VTA planning, like VTA bus service from this part of the city to say Santa Clara business districts? Like we have a bigger related project coming up. So what has VTA given a thought to connect all those major Santa Clara point businesses and east side from this Santa Clara station? Is that in the planning? Because the total solution is, it will only have a good total solution when we provide that last mile travel and the whole of the transportation solution, basically. Any thoughts on that? Thank you.
Councilmember Jane, you had, your hand is still up.
Yeah, so this being an end of the line station, there are a number of, let's say, unhoused people that ride the train kind of all day. When the train ends at the end of the night, what happens to all those people at the end of the line? Is there a thought to what, where they go and, you know, all of those issues?
Okay, that's a good question. All right, VTA staff or I see Assistant Director Liu is on as well, so I don't know who wants to start.
I was going to suggest the VTA staff start and then Mike can fill in on the city side where VTA leaves off.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm trying, as I'm listening to the questions, like there's some themes. Like first of all, I think the first thing that I'm not sure, like because of the rules of engagement, do I need to go through the list or can I kind of respond on the themes?
I'd say respond on the themes for the moment. If we have follow up questions, because it's, it was so large that, yeah.
Right, and we do try to pick them all down. But I think the first, the first theme, I think, and Mayor Geraldo, you alluded to it, and it's the response to the article today. What happens if there's budget constraints or can this station end up getting cut? So I just, I want to emphasize that the project that we got approved, that we can build, that we got environmental clearance on and that the federal government will fund, is the project as currently configured. And that is the six mile four station project with the Santa Clara station and the new hall yard and maintenance facility. So we can't, if we were to do anything different than that, that becomes a different project. We can't phase this project. Like when we phased the entire program with phase one and phase two, those became two separate projects that we had to have two separate environmental clearances. So we can't phase delivery, we can't do a station for later because that becomes two separate projects then. That would be a three station project and a one station project. So I just want to really emphasize that what we have basically legal authority and the project that we are applying for federal funds is the six mile four station project with the station as proposed that we shared tonight. So I do really want to make that very clear, that we're not looking at any kind of phased approach, that that would be a different project. So the project we're pursuing, the project that we've been designing for, the project that we're procuring for is that project. So I wanted to, I think that was one of the main, the main themes, right? This is fully going to happen. The other aspect to that, as being the end of the line station, currently it is being designed as the end of the line station. And yes, the rail yard is extremely important because without that rail yard, it would mean that we would have to return the trains back to the Hayward Yard, right? And that would add significant operational costs. So to take this station or to remove this and remove that rail yard, well, there might be some initial savings. The long term operations without that yard would actually probably cost more than any savings. So I just wanted to emphasize that. But yes, and it is being designed as an end of the line station, not with the intent to add on to it after this. But I, that's the current, you know, process, that this is being built as an end of the line station. Trying to think, do we have any other? Okay, and then the next theme was sort of baseline, or yes?
I may add another point for everybody. It's usually 20% of the total ridership of the line comes from Santa Clara station. Well, it's an important contributor to the transportation utilization of this facility.
And did you want anything else about our federal project?
Yeah, you can just go ahead and I have more things to answer. So go ahead, thank you.
So then I think the next theme was sort of the design of the station and are there opportunities? And what drove that design? How did we get there? Are there opportunities to change? How far along are we with that design? So while we are at a fairly early stage of design, right, we engaged the design review committee. We engaged in the design review committee on the aesthetic elements of the station. The core station design was based on the footprint of the station, the requirements for that rail yard and maintenance facility. And while we sort of compressed, Mayor Geraldo, you alluded that we had a bigger footprint. The actual maintenance facility, the maintenance facility, what was really compressed was more the track alignment for the storage tracks and such. So the facilities that are part of that station weren't necessarily smaller. They're just in a more compact package as far as the footprint, but we did really compress those tracks in there. And that whole layout and the functionality of this as an operational BART station and rail yard is really what drove the design as well as our facility standards. Because first and foremost, this is a transit station with the central elements, you know, the fare gates, the communications, the actual train and all the systems that operate those trains. So that drove some of the initial design as well as the passenger experience, like Erica alluded to. Like because the other three stations were going to basically be below ground stations, we had an opportunity here to really give a more open air, go up above, your view as someone requested. What you see when you go over, you are seeing the rail yard. And actually, we looked at some options for some of the structures to make them more opaque. We actually got some input from staff in the community that couldn't we have things be a little more open so that you would have a view? Because people thought that the actual rail yard might be interesting. So that is the view and yes, there is an open air and yes, there will be a restroom. And while concessions are not part of the current project right now, and Taka, please step in here. That is not to say that our real estate team or something could not maybe in the future accommodate some concessions later in that area. That would have to be something I believe that we have to work with on BART. Because I know they have some concessions in Coffee and some other areas. But another key element of that is that much of that I believe is going to happen as part of the Hunter Storm development. I believe there will be some brown floor retail. So I think that was part of the equation, that some of that activation would happen on that Hunter Storm development, brown floor retail space. Another aspect of stations, the questions that came up were the bike pedestrian access. And Councilmember Jane, we have had, I think we had a little bit of discussion on this. I think we're looking, there's been concerns about the bike ped, any conflicts within the underpass. And I don't know whether there could be some kind of separation of the two way currently. There have been some concerns about safety, the line of sight. I know that as the space gets more activated, some of those concerns lessen. I know that as the space gets more activated, some of those concerns lessen. I, we are looking as part of the project, uh, there is some reconfiguration at the connection to the BART station. But as part of the project, we have not included a redesign of that, um, connection from Caltrain. So as that with other, uh, like looking at the traffic, we are bringing up many of these, um, subjects to our VTA planning director, um, like the Broca Road congestion and, um, what would be VTA's role as the congestion management agency for Santa Clara County? And are there other options that VTA as an agency can explore with the city of Santa Clara and some of these other solutions as a companion, not for this federal project? Because we are constrained in the project, what's essential for the project, right? Other things in addition to that would be deemed as betterments if they are not, or requirements of the project. That is not to say that there are not other possibilities with VTA and the city to look at what, what, what could be some of those solutions? Because yes, like, while some of those conditions exist, right? Like how will this, and we've done the modeling, like, what will the impacts of even more, right, traffic and access beyond what is already here? So it is not part of the federal project, but it is something that we've been taking all this input, we've gotten similar input in certain areas of the city of San Jose, and we're bringing that to the attention of VTA planning to look at like, what, what are the possibilities? Uh, I think the other theme was redesign of the station and where are the opportunities? So while I said we had early old design, a lot of the work that goes into the, the contract specs, we had to, uh, get some of those specifics in so that we could get competitive bids based on that certain level of design and to be able to budget for that. So that is why we did the design review committee, when we did the design review committee, so we can incorporate that input. And we tried to have those options that we looked at through that committee that would be within the constraints of the project as far as budget. And had to think about what would, in addition to the initial cost, consider, and this has been, uh, this has been an item that's been, uh, what do I want to say? Coming, uh, to the attention of many agencies. Um, it's not just the initial capital cost, but we have to look at the long-term operational cost of these facilities. So one of the items that came up was the kinetic facade. And while we are still looking at how we can accommodate that, we are looking at maybe constraining how large that element would be, um, because there were some safety concerns about where we can place that, if there was any falling parts or anything. We had to look at maybe a different placement and then maybe constraining to a smaller area so that we could accommodate the long-term operation and maintenance. So many of these items, it is not just looking at the initial capital cost, but looking at how can we assure that we can operate and maintain these stations going into the next fifty, one hundred years? Uh, Erica, I might call on you to talk about the, um, micro-mobility, the drop-off and, and Champions Way, because we had a couple of questions on that.
Sure. Yeah, so, um, I know the, the council recently approved your micro-mobility policy within the city and as, as we move forward with that, we can work with the micro-mobility providers on, on geofencing for where locations of folks will be able to, um, leave their scooters and such, so that we can eliminate any, um, conflicts or safety issues within the pedestrian undercrossing related to that. And we can also work through, uh, adjusting the signage within the tunnel, uh, the pedestrian undercrossing, um, to acknowledge that those, um, rules needing to walk their bicycles also apply to scooters and such for initial safety there. Um, in the space that's designated for pickup-dropoff space in front of the station, there is enough room there to accommodate the, um, transportation, the Uber, Lyft, uh, pickup-dropoff areas in front of the station, so that can be accommodated there. I think that was one of the other questions.
The other, there was a question related to the distance of travel from when you go up to the stairs coming from, I think Champions Way, you go up over the tracks and down to the platform. I do want to note that when we showed the video, we had the individual walking all the way from the northern end of the platform to the southern end of the platform. So that seven hundred feet we added to that. So you could actually go right back down those stairs on the other side. So we did, just to show you the whole overall comfort of the platform, we basically walked that seven hundred feet to the very other end of the platform. So it did make that distance look considerably, probably four times as long as it would be if you just went up and over and back down toward. So, um, I just wanted to clarify why that looked so long. That will not be the typical experience, but we did want to show you how, the size of the station.
Let's see. Uh, there are questions there. I was just going to say, there was a couple of questions about construction impacts with respect to the dirt and, and just, um, when it would start and when it actually would start.
Yeah, there will be and, um, there will be, the early efforts will be some of the utility relocations and then it will be primarily in San Jose, but the, the west tunnel portal, that will be some of the early construction works. So there will be some activity happening in the rail yard that will start, um, earlier when we do the notice to proceed. So some of those early construction activities will start occurring, um, in that, uh, twenty twenty-three timeframe. And the muck removal, I know there was a question and I might have gray or top, but we did look at, uh, muck removal through, we did try to look at, uh, a rail, um, option, but I think that we were not able to, uh, make that or able to secure that. So we are planning on that muck removal, um, happening through trucks. And we'll know more on the timing of that. That will be part of the CTMP and we'll be doing a specific CTMP for the CP2 contract and for the CP3, the yard and Santa Clara station contract. And we will be reaching out to the community when the progressive design builder for the CP2 or the design builder for the CP3 contract identify their means and methods, will be coming back to the community and the council to, uh, share the input, um, prior to the final CTMPs being developed.
Sure. It was not, uh, to answer the question, well, technically, that since, uh, we're going to see some construction, if everything was okay in this year, we are in the procurement phase, sometime around Thanksgiving, I would say, we're going to see some light construction, like Bernie said, around the Dillin Dam in San Jose area there, some of the Dillin is relocation, bring new power to be ready for the tunneling machine, starts exploring how the, the shaft, if you like it, they will be built to put the tunneling machine and so on. And then the year after that, hopefully, we're going to start almost nine months later for the tunneling machine. The way the schedule we consider now, the rule of thumb is thirty-five feet a day of tunneling. For that muck removal, the contractor, like Bernie said, is going to calculate it based on production of his tunneling machine. Thirty-five feet a day, the calculation is so much soil to come out, it's not going to be, the tunneling machine is going to work twenty-four-seven underground, but not, the truckloads are not going to go out in that format. They cannot be done that way. Also, the soil coming out of the tunneling machine, we call it MACC in our, uh, language, it's very wet, for that has to be dry first, has to be laid down and dry and then haul away. And we're working with different agencies around the Bay Area, which they asking us to let them have that soil for them to go out. For that, there is a game plan here, we don't want us as a public agency to tell the contractor what to do and how to do it. That's part of his means and methods, as you know, the contractual terms. For that, yes, your concerns about heavy truckloads on your streets and all this stuff, the same thing with the city of San Jose. And it's going to be a perfect environment, a whole week set of contractors going to operate and so on and so forth. But we're going to keep you posted on that next year when we know more and when we see the scheduling and so on. I hope that answers your question.
I think under the construction, um, impacts, the, one of the key questions was, um, the gap between project completion and project opening as well. And if you could just comment on that.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Usually, uh, um, uh, we allow eighteen months from the completion of construction to the passenger revenue service. And I think that's what we have in our schedule now, for that we are mindful that the entity which is going to do the preparation and testing for passenger services. But of course, now we have an agreement with BART, as we know, we have reached consensus on everything. For that, our schedule shows eighteen months. And I hope to do a little bit earlier than that, but we're way out to make that decision right now. But eighteen months, the rule of thumb.
Actually, this is Mike Lewis, I knew one more follow-up. There was a question regarding bus service to the station. So are there any plans for future bus service, uh, since there's going to be a BART station here to Santa Clara destination? Who does want a Councilmember to ask a question?
When we did the various extension, we had the BART integration into the VTA planning. So yes, that will be, that will be something that VTA, because this will be, this will be a major stop for VTA, right? Because it'll be a connection to Caltrain, it'll be a connection to BART. So very much like, it was the BART system integration that we will be doing that within the VTA transit network. So definitely that will be a key part of VTA's future intermodal planning for, uh, their integration with BART and VTA transit services, very much like they did at the various and Milpitas station.
And I, actually, if I could add a few comments, this is really kind of on the city side. So there were, there were comments relate, in relation to, uh, construction impact, impacts during construction as well as traffic. And once the construction's complete and the station's open. So in terms of construction impacts during construction, that was, you know, part of the presentation. And that is where, you know, city has staff has voiced our concerns regarding the, the issue of traffic on Broca itself. So part of that discussion with the VK moving forward and the contractor is what can be done to limit that amount of trucking or construction activity on that roadway? And I may be, we may be looking at options where certain times of the day that's allowed, maybe not allowed during the, the heavy, um, holiday season. You know, I, I experienced that myself where it was pretty bad out there. So those are, those are things that, you know, the staff is, is working with the VK on, although I know that there may be some issues in terms of how that affects the overall project schedule, which is, you know, that's a balancing act at the end of the day, that's the city staff and the VK. And we often have to deal with when you're, you know, construction, you don't have projects that people want sooner rather than later. That's construction, that's impacts during construction. After construction's complete and the station's up and running, what's important to note is that there was a graphic shown earlier where you see Champion Way and it actually connects to Coleman. So what that is right now, if you were to drive out there today, you'd see a red new signal at Champion Way and Coleman. It doesn't currently get to the back of where Broca is, but it will connect. And, you know, when we, when we talked with the VK about circulation, one of the key things that was brought up was that, you know, when, when people are going to be parking at the station, they're not likely to probably go down Broca and then make a left into Champion and then turn right into the station. So probably just keep going down Coleman and then take, take advantage of that new signal there. So really, you know, ultimately, that's hopefully going to help in terms of people that want to access the station to park there, which is basically vehicle, they would actually hopefully not go down Coleman, they would just continue on Coleman, sorry, not go down Broca, continue on Coleman and then have a straight shot right into the garage, which is really what we're all hoping for. The other circulation pattern where you're coming down Broca, passing Costco on your right, and they're making a left into the, um, the station, that's really more of a drop-off scenario. Um, so just wanted to mention that because, you know, with the opportunity with gateway crossings, the signal they built at, it was built recently and then the, kind of the circular kind of roadway that's been, you know, shown on these diagrams, that does provide an additional access point to the BART station, which is really going to hopefully be the primary access for vehicles as they try to get to the garage. I just, just wanted to mention that because the previous, if, if you look at the EIR, it was approved of a project where station was on the other side, everybody was coming down Coleman and leaving Coleman. So really, we're hoping they start coming down Broca and leaving Broca. So we're hoping they're going to go down, um, and projecting they're going to come down, um, Champion Way to access Coleman versus, you know, dealing with the, 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 the traffic that's going to be on, um, the existing traffic that's on Broca today. Lastly, there were comments relating to Costco in terms of, you know, the circulation there. So our staff is engaged with Costco as well as the, um, the, the vice mayor in terms of central solutions. We've looked at it preliminarily, there's no final word on it, because a lot of this has to deal with the circulation that occurs within the Costco itself, right? There, if you go out there today, you'll see that there is one point where basically everybody intersected, it's on the property itself. So, um, you know, there's more and more to come on that. You know, I think one of the, there was a suggestion about a different path coming down Broca. I think the only concern there is that involves another property that's not a part of the discussion today. So just, just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, Costco, the issues with Costco are existing. And, you know, with, with this project as well gateway crossings, we're, you know, we're trying not to exacerbate that. And, but, you know, Costco, you know, brought that to our attention and we're, we're engaged with them in terms of trying to find solutions, but ultimately, they do, they do and will involve, you know, probably changes to on-site circulation to some degree. Because really, when you go to Costco today, you're basically all coming in and all intersecting at the same part, which is basically another intersection that is just constantly packed up. So it, it is, it is pretty bad during the, during the holidays. I just wanted to mention that, and so the staff acknowledged that.
Thank you, very good points. All right, uh, VTA staff, do you have any other answers? Or are you finished? I think we might have an additional question or two. Uh, Councilmember Jane, you have a question?
Yeah, um, well, first, there was the end of the line humanitarian problem, but, um, it was not answered. But, you know, Bernie, I've contended for some time that I believe that the Santa Clara station is kind of an afterthought. They, you know, BART and VTA need the maintenance yard, but we're sort of getting short-changed by the design and amenities. And Bernie's actually sort of alluded to that. She said that, uh, they consider only items essential for the project because of budget constraints. And then I didn't get an answer for the dates at which changes could be made at the station. I think the design of the station, it sounds like is already baked out because it's already been, it's already completely baked because it's already been bid out for cost reasons. So is there any opportunity for any changes in the station design? Uh, I'm not a big fan of the kinetic structure, simply because I think it's a operations and maintenance nightmare to have something that moves. And then I, you know, I've been concerned, uh, I think Takas said that twenty percent of the ridership is, it comes to Santa Clara, whereas Milpitas and Beriasa have a thousand parking spots, we have only five hundred. Will there be dynamic pricing for parking? How will we make sure that, uh, people get there and there's still parking available when they get there so they can catch the train that they need? So those are my questions, thank you.
Councilmember Watson, do you have an additional question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had one suggestion regarding the Costco, maybe people should start using Instacart more, uh, take some of the traffic out of the way. But, uh, the other, uh, my other question, uh, seriously, is, um, regarding the funding, because I know there have been several comments, you know, with concerns about, uh, the funding. Um, does VTA, does this project still have access to Measure A or Measure B funding or, um, any other regional measures that were passed, um, to, um, uh, get the funding for, for this project? So, uh, in, just so basically, is, is there funding still available from those, uh, different measures? And, uh, yeah, so that's, that's all I had, thank you.
And I have an additional comment that nobody's brought up yet, and that is about, um, and I don't know if you have answers now, I know there will have to be contracts and, and other things that we've discussed this at the VTA board meetings, but, uh, what about security on the trains at the, you know, at, at the end, um, BART's? Um, BART's security, uh, you know, we all read in the paper about things that happen on BART trains, you know, mainly in the East Bay, but, um, what, what about security for our Santa Clara community and those that will be riding BART from Santa Clara? Sorry, there's another additional round of questions. And then I want to go to the public, so I know some you may be able to answer, some you may not, but if you could just do your best, thank you.
So let's, um, let me, let me address Councilmember James about the station design and the changes and where we're at. And so when I was talking about the, the budget, right, there are, there are, in the federal projects, there are cost elements that are defined, right, that would be essential elements to the project. And anything outside of those would be considered burdens, right? So we are constrained as to what is essential for a station, the elements of a station. Uh, when we did, like I said, the DRC, we looked at what was in those cost elements and what we could accommodate as far as the, the aesthetic architectural finishes that we could accommodate within those budgets that wouldn't be seen as burdens. As far as the design, uh, we, the, the basic design is fairly, um, locked in as far as, um, where the contracts are, because this contract interfaces with all the other contracts. Any significant change to this contract could negatively impact the progression of the other contracts because of the interfaces. So that could result in a significant project delay and significant cost increases. I think it might be helpful, we did this exercise with the City of San Jose for the Foster and Partners team to maybe have a little presentation on what was behind the thought and, and like, because I really learned a lot from that, because I, I didn't realize all the things that they considered that went into that design. And when you hear why things are the way they are, it just really helps you appreciate that design better. So I think that that might be valuable, because I think there, there was a significant amount of engineering feats and thought about the passenger experience that went into those stations. And I'm not sure that we've visualized it or articulated it to the full extent, and that might be helpful to sort of understand why things are where they are and why they look the way they look. And the DRC was more about how passengers see the station, that was the, the main purpose of that, not so much how they use the station, right? And what Foster and Partners can help explain is how people will pass through, use and use the facilities and why they are where they are. Um, other question, the parking, uh, the parking, the 500 parking spaces was based on the modeling, and there will be dynamic pricing for the parking. Um, it isn't to say that was what was required by the project, what was environmentally cleared. That doesn't say if there was some desire for additional partners, that there could be some kind of, um, exploration of something with one of the developers, um, for additional parking. But that would not be part of the project, because once again, the project, the 500 spaces is what was environmentally cleared and deemed required to support the project. But yes, we do use dynamic pricing at both the Berriessa and the Milpitas stations. And that is the plan for this parking structure as well. Let's see, the security, uh, right now for the existing stations is a combination. BART, uh, is responsible for security of everything within the, the drip line, they call it. It's basically everything within the, the line where rain would drip on the building, basically, kind of even outside of the barricades. So that's BART's jurisdiction, and they, and that's what VTA reimburses for as part of the operations and maintenance. VTA contracts with the Sheriff's Department, so they are responsible for some other, or whoever we end up contracting with at that point. And then we also work with the local jurisdiction. So for instance, the Milpitas Station, we have the sheriff, we have BART, and we have Milpitas PD, City of San Jose. It's, um, also the sheriff, City of San Jose, and BART.
Madam Mayor, if I add something to Bernice here, the question you had was a similar question we did last year, if you remember, because Berriessa, it would be the end of the line, and a lot of people at our board, they were wondering how things would happen. Same question you asking, when the station becomes end of the line. And like Bernie said, we work a coordination with BART and the safety department, and our safety department. And you see, we've been good so far. Of course, you can't really take that because of the pandemic and the lower ridership. For that, we should really keep this, your question in front of us. And four, five years from now, when we really have the project, then we know, we should revisit it and have some conversation with the BART folks of what agreement they have in place with the safe, how they plan, and they have those different words they use in what they do and so on and so forth. But yes, we should go back and discuss that when we know more about it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. It is important, and people want, you know, of course, safety when they're riding or their, members of their family are riding, they want, all want safety. And I know that should be, you know, a priority for all of us, but thank you all.
I, I agree with that on the, you remember that, the meeting, the meetings about opening of Phase One.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and there was one more question, I forgot, which I don't know.
Funding, there was a funding question.
Funding, yes, the funding. Here's where we are with the funding, and I know, uh, the mayor knows because part of our VTA board. Uh, we got the budget, say, $7 billion, $7 billion for this project. And the federal government did a risk assessment, because, you know, we are in a different environment, in a different market. You know, things are different anymore, right? But they said, oh, okay, we believe the ceiling for this project budget was actually be $9.1 billion. But that, we are between $7 and $9.1. And the federal government said, go ahead, here's what we're going to do for your project, because you are a synergy project for the United States. We love your innovation, we love what you try to do. Go ahead and finish your contracts and get the big prices in. Then come back and tell us what the market gave you. Is your project $7 billion, $7.4, $7.9, what's your, definitely it's not $9 billion, we know that much. For that, it's going to be a number above the $7 someplace. Then based on that, we are working, our VTA executive office is working to develop different scenarios and see how we're going to address this. The federal government, however, has committed 25% in federal funding, up to $9.2 billion project. But having that on our side, getting the proposals here, and that's what Bernie said, we cannot really go ahead and put our hands here, because we don't have money to pay for all this. But we went through the community, I know the Santa Clara staff, city, were very close with us, and many other people have a nice design, and at the same time, we can justify the federal government's inefficient design in terms of cost. But we're going to hear later, as we don't know what's the project budget, how we're going to fund this, and how things should be done. We are optimistic here, we're going to have a good product out there.
Thank you. All right, um, I, uh, hearing all that, this is a lot of information for all of us. I'm going to go to our members of the public for their comments or potential questions that they may have on this issue. It's a very important issue. So we're going to start with, um, Dan. Go ahead, Dan, followed by Rob. I don't know who ready, there, there you go, there you go.
There we go.
Go ahead.
I'm muted. Thank you all. I'm going to start with the, the smaller question first. Can other funding sources, um, such as Cory Booker's RIFAA infrastructure funding, um, program be used in parallel with this plan without it affecting the current plan or its funding? And the reason I'm asking that, quite a few people were asking about the Broca-Benton connection, and I don't think we really got a tangible answer to that. How do we connect those two, which is what, um, was the case for, you know, 80 years? Cars used to drive over Benton to Broca. My second point is riders from the peninsula right now in the East Bay who want to fly out of Manetta have to pass right through Santa Clara to Deirden. And then they are, I guess they're going to be put into a tube and shot 3.6 miles to Manetta. So the glaring question is, is this decoupled, that part of it, decoupled from this plan? And why isn't Santa Clara that hub if we're a quarter mile away from Terminal A? And could that be something that would be supplementally funded by a program such as Cory Booker's, the RIFAA? Our group is called Washington DC, and that definitely falls into the realm of that. So I'd like an answer to that question. How do we connect Broca and Benton, and is that a funding source to do that? Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and collect those questions as well. So, um, like the airport connection and that, I know San Jose just put out an RFP for that, so, um, thank you for that. Rob, go ahead, Rob, followed by Eugene.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, Gilmore. Uh, yeah, first of all, uh, I don't want to undermine the, the, the reality that this is a very complicated project with a lot of entities involved. But I want to talk a little bit about design, and that, you know, I think the design needs to be more inspiring, more synergized. You know, Foster, Sponsors and Partners is a, you know, a world-renowned architectural firm, and I know they're doing quite a job in San Jose. But when I hear terracotta-colored pavement, uh, as, as a design element, I kind of just, you know, it doesn't do much for me. And I know our history is, is Mission City and terracotta is related to that, but this is on the modern side, kind of an industrial, modern side with great gateway crossings. And I'd rather see some more innovative visionary design on, for this station. I'm still frustrated that it can't be just slid down, uh, south so that when you're at the historic train station, you actually have a view corridor towards gateway crossings, so there's a visual connectivity. You know, highways, freeways, bar tracks have divided communities over the years, and, and I feel like this station is kind of this block between our vintage train station and gateway crossings. So that's another element. I do feel that the reason we're getting the station is because they need it for the yard. You already have Caltrain going to downtown, to Deirdredon, so, you know, you can already get there and then get on the BART there. But I think it's sort of coming along with the, you know, the programs and give us a carrot to, to want to have the, uh, the, these, the maintenance yard in our backyard as opposed to San Jose. I wish there was more outreach where we had more involvement and we could talk to Foster's partners about the design. Uh, we couldn't do that the last meeting. I, I put in some, uh, I'm going to just finish up real quick, some comments that they never got discussed. There was no interplay. It was write something in and, and no interplay and back and forth conversation, because that's required for design, uh, change. You need to have an interplay. Thank you, Mayor Gilmore.
Thank you, thank you very much, Rob. Good points. Um, Eugene, go ahead, Eugene, followed by Jonathan. Eugene, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Eugene Bradley, founder and CEO of the Silicon Valley Transit Users. Just a couple of things that I want to bring up, just a couple of things I want to bring up. First off, I agree with Councilmember Park that stairs need to be added to that station design for Santa Clara, which is in the, which is in the ballot measure of Measure A, it's in the ballot language. So it has, basically has to happen, otherwise a lot of, not, the voters would not be very happy about that. I'll leave it at that. Also, given that the cost overruns and that the federal government has asked to basically have VTA just redo how the costs of that, what more has VTA done to at least help control some of these costs to ensure that this Santa Clara station will happen as promised to the voters in 2000? Also, this is more towards Councilmembers Shabal, Shahal, and Becker. Regarding the connection, regarding the traffic at Costco, have either one of you gentlemen ever heard of the number 60 bus? That bus currently, in addition to serving to the airport, it passes Costco right on Coleman. And there's a stop about, right at the corner where people can simply walk about 10 minutes to Costco. I've done that a couple of times. I'd be certainly more, more than happy to show either one of you how to properly use that 60 bus to help beat traffic. So my question, just to sum it up, is that how will the cost overruns be handled, which are already occurring now? And finally, it's something I wanted to ask Takis more appropriately. Which claim is that VTA has to innovate? I was wondering if either he or somebody on Santa Clara City Council answered which law mandates VTA must innovate in its projects? Just a few questions that need to be answered. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Eugene. Uh, Jonathan, followed by Seefulhurst. Jonathan?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Jonathan Evans, President Okra and Member of the Santa Clara Station CWG. And I appreciate the councilmembers' comments on circulation and design tonight, and I want to echo a few of them. I've participated in the CWG since 2020, and while I'm excited to see BART come to Santa Clara at our most transit-connected location, the final design of the station still leaves much to be desired. The community envisioned Santa Clara Station areas being an important element in bringing people to and from Santa Clara. VTA has heard this desire, but the station does not meet the desire. There has been nothing presented to the community that other design options were ever seriously considered, such as direct access from the Caltrain station and at Broca Road. While we appreciate being involved in the DRC, the only feedback we were able, able to give was about the skinning of the station and not critical elements. Everything presented to the community indicates that the rail yard is the main design point, and the station is being crammed into the leftover space. This raised platform circulation to and from the Caltrain channel makes circulation challenging to and from the Caltrain and seems modeled after the painful transfer at Millbury. And I look forward to many years of missing BART to Caltrain connections. Disabled patrons will have to wait for elevators to and from the platform and mezzanine and wait again the transfer to Caltrain or exit the station. The parking lot blocks visibility of the gateway crossings Paseo, and the retail there is not aligned with the pedestrian access to the station as we envisioned when that gateway crossing project was approved. Why don't we have a bus connection on the northeast side for airport connectivity to save a trip? Is the VTA counting and cutting Santa Clara's airport transfer out by adding a connection from Deirdredon? CP3 is a $500 million contract, and having a subpar station come out of that is a major disappointment. When I asked at the CWG, there is no solid amount of the CP3 contract allocated to the station versus the rail yard. I don't want to be left with a maintenance yard without a station or a station with an even worse design or circulation. This would be the worst possible outcome for Santa Clara. All I hear is excuses that we must cut corners for Santa Clara because VTA chose not to take feedback during the process. I ask, what can the city council do to have VTA BART build a better station? The yard seems critical. Can the city withhold signing a second cooperative agreement? Mayor Gilmore is a current member of the VTA board. Can you help? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the answer is yes. All right. Uh, Seefulhurst, followed by Mary.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, if there's going to be a Benton and Broca, uh, connection. I know that there are a lot of workers on Coleman who will want access to the station and our downtown. And I would like to see Benton and, uh, Broca connected. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, Mary, followed by phone number ending in 7059.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gilmore and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. What I would like to say is with the proposed downtown, which will add thousands of residences and a hotel, the Prometheus Apartments, all the proposed new construction in the near future for housing around the railway station, which is the Benton Corridor, the gateway project, and two hotels going on, on Broca, for this and many more reasons, not to mention the closeness of the airport, uh, to the airport from the Santa Clara Station. You waver and say that there is not enough ridership to warrant this station in Santa Clara, or, uh, not to spend, that, that it's going to be, you chose a, a very, um, not very expensive station to build. I'm thinking, you're not looking at the potential here. Santa Clara does not want just a parking lot for your trains after hours. We want a destination that will make Santa Clara and its downtown proud. And, uh, I know many of the airports, they have belts that, uh, And I know many of the airports, they have belts that get people from A to B. If it's a long walk for that facility that you're planning. That might be a solution if it is a long walk. And also as a solution to the congestion is to build a tunnel that goes straight from Benton across the tracks all the way to the airport. And you build the tunnel right underneath. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for listening to me. Good night.
Thank you, Mary. We have a phone number ending in 7059, followed by Adrian. Go ahead, 7059. I think you're still on mute, 7059. Still on, hello? Did we lose that person, Assistant City Clerk?
Looks like you lowered his hand.
Okay, Adrian then, followed by Patricia. Go ahead, Adrian.
She just, he or she dropped off.
Okay, Patricia, followed by Jeff.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council for listening to us. I want to echo Patricia Long, Board Member of OCRE. So I want to echo Jonathan's sentiments that the public input was heard but not listened to. The number of input that VTA received does not equate approval of the project as is presented. So there, you know, we were only given opportunity to work on the aesthetics on a building that's already set. But the articulation is very poor. One of my problems of this, and I'm also on the CAC for Caltrain, is the connection between, you know, BART and Caltrain and the VTA buses on the other side. I feel like the articulation is very problematic because you do have to walk a very long way up and down. The platforms and the concourse itself. You know, as we know, as transit riders know, you know, escalators and elevators can get like pretty gummed up from the use. The concourse length on top is a little bit concerning to me. It's 700 feet like from end to end. It does lend itself to have some quiet corners. So the mayor's question about security is very pertinent. And we're, you know, some of the council members also mentioned about the retail perhaps. The concourse design itself does not lend to that. So even if there's intention to do it, it probably, it's not very feasible. We also aren't even talking about the, maybe a potential of doing housing on top of the station itself. It's prime real estate. So with the, you know, as needed design, it's not going to support that at all. With regards to Broca going through, that won't happen because it is a Caltrain and U P right of way. And we really don't want to run ourselves into a situation in Palo Alto where we get like two, three cars driving on the track monthly. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Jeff, go ahead, Jeff, followed by number 7059 again. Go ahead, Jeff.
Hello. I'm retired now, but I've spent a lot of my life on BART. I've been commuting on BART since the early 80s. My parents commuted on BART since it was first built. I've practically ridden every BART rail that currently exists. As a resident of Santa Clara, I'm proud that we might provide BART a rail yard facility. I'm dismayed by my fellow community members who feel there's a problem with the rail facility. I rode Caltrains for the last 10 years, riding my bicycle to the Santa Clara Station and then riding northward towards San Francisco. So I'm very familiar with that platform. The rail yard has always been there and it's never been a problem before. We should be proud to have a station here in Santa Clara. We should be proud to support BART by providing them a maintenance facility so they don't have to take the trains to Hayward. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, 7059. 7059? See if it works this time.
Mayor, I just got a text from 7059 and he's trying to, there he is.
Hello there, sorry, I, my name's John Urban. I just have three comments. One of them is the end of line, end of day unhoused persons. You know, in Santa Clara, we're trying to go ahead and create a champion, you know, a community between Champion's Way, Coleman and Broca. Sometimes at the end of the night, at 1:30 in the morning, a lot of people get off. And I just wonder, you know, get off the train. I wonder what the back of house function is. Will they address some of the people that are unhoused? You know, we hate to have them come into our community and, you know, disrupt things. And you know, they don't, you know, we need to get them some counseling on housing. So that's number one. Number two, the western side of the station near Caltrain has access under the tunnel, but the, the way it was designed, the non-stepped access is very, very narrow. You know, where you can ride your bike. You can, one bike can go down one direction and pedestrians coming back the other direction. It's pretty dangerous. I've seen pedestrians with luggage. I'm just wondering if we can find a little bit better way to get from one side to the other. Maybe going from under Broca to Benton. Just not necessarily for automobiles, but certainly for pedestrians and bicyclists. And the last one would be that, I don't know how much J P B and BART, VTA work together. I know that they work together at Millbrae. But in terms of parking, you know, we are likely to lose the parking that is located between El Camino Real and the Caltrain Station. On the, and with the loss of that, of that parking, I'm afraid that maybe some Calten patrons are going to start wanting to park over in the BART stations. Is an end of the line. Terminal station. And I'm just afraid that there's just going to be a huge demand when you're at the, you know, it's got a big foot up area which people are going to come to use our, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Adrian, go ahead. Adrian?
Okay, this time I got an interview. Last time I didn't receive one. So a few comments. I'd like to second the comment that the stairs are required and that there should be bike channels for people to push their bikes up and down those stairs. Also, the comment regarding the link to the airport that needs to be via Deirdre. Because the city of San Jose and the airport decided they did not want to tunnel under the runways. And secondly, and more importantly, Deirdre is the premium hub, which will have high speed rail service. And high speed rail service does need an airport link. So that would make the most sense. Regarding the actual station design, I am a member of the Caltrain Citizens Advisory Committee, like a prior commenter. And I'm very concerned about sort of the Rube Goldbergian up, down, up, down that this design requires. It is reminiscent of and probably worse potentially than the Millbrae transfer. And that is that if you're coming from Caltrain, you have to go down a level, over, up two levels, over and down another level before you're actually on a BART platform. And that's just, that's outrageous. For people that are going obviously the other way around, same problem. And for people who are just looking to traverse the barrier of the train tracks from east to west that are not necessarily riding the train from or to Champion or any of those areas over on that side. Again, there's too much up and down being required. And so what is very easy to do and what should have been done is that you line up with the existing underground passage under the Caltrain tracks. And that way, every single potential traversal, whether from BART to Caltrain, Caltrain to BART, BART to ACE, ACE to BART, et cetera, or pedestrians or bikes, they only have to go down once, over and up. So that's an obvious improvement and that should be done. That's the way Deirdre works and that's the way, it is absolutely logical. Form must follow function. And the view is probably nice to have, but if you think about all the thousands of ups, downs that should be avoided and are being needlessly imposed in perpetuity, you really should consider putting the concourse below ground. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Adrian. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, do we have any written comments, Assistant City Clerk?
I do not. I have refreshed and I have no.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, woo, what was that? Wow, okay. Well, thank you very much. Now I'm going to go back to our VTA representatives or our city staff to see if there's any questions there that you may want to answer. I know there was questions about the connections between Broca and Benton. There was quite a few comments on that. And then also about the design of the facility as well. Maybe you can tell us about, has the, has the train left the station on the design or where are we on that? So that was my attempt at humor. So let's, let's, let's talk about that, the connections and, and the design and as well as some of the other comments that were, that were talked about, the stairs and that as well. So anybody want to jump in on, on some of these? Bernice, I don't know. You look anxious. Yes.
So I, I, I just want to clarify that there was a comment that there needs to be stairs. And I'm not sure, but there are, there is a combination of stairs, escalators and elevators for the ups and the downs. So I just wanted to make sure that that, that there was a comment that legally we had to provide stairs and there are stairs. So I did want to just say that. As far as the overall station design, as I mentioned before, if there was any significant tweaks at this point, it would adversely impact the overall schedule and the other contracts that are integrated with this contract. So not to say that there couldn't be some other opportunities as we advance the design, but the basic station layout is, is pretty fixed. And Takis, I don't know if you want to weigh in here, but I, I, I don't agree necessarily. I don't agree that the, all the focus was put on the yard because that's why I think maybe some type of mini workshop or maybe if we work with the staff and with Foster and Partners and they can present all the rationale that went behind this station design. The travel distances, the up and the down, I think is very similar to the Warm Spring Station. And I don't believe there's been historically negative feedback about that. So that it's not unprecedented and it is obviously a very, what I want to say, challenging situation being on the other side of some tracks where the people are going to enter on that side. So we, as a project, we're utilizing that existing undercrossing, right? That is going underneath the Caltrain tracks and incorporating that ability to traverse the Caltrain tracks to access the station. So utilizing that existing underpass with some modifications at the end. Question, I mean, I think there were many comments. I'm not sure with other questions. I mean, there was a comment about we need to maintain the budget. So there is obviously that balancing act, right? With good design and staying within the constraints of what we can fund so that we can deliver this project and bring that public benefit.
I think there was a question about the vehicle connection between Broca and Benton. And maybe reconnecting at some point and some, maybe some funds available for that in Washington or, or that. R A F I A funds, I don't know if you're familiar with that and are able to talk about that? Or maybe our city staff can talk about that?
Yeah, I would definitely defer to the city staff on this because that would be outside of the project scope.
Okay. Thank you. Did you comment on the airport connection? I know several had, had asked about that as well.
Yeah, I believe.
Santa Clara is so much closer to the airport.
I believe the last speaker, you know, the city of San Jose is working on that connection from the Deirdre on station. And basically with the premise that that is the major intermodal connection that will be kind of considered the grand central station of Northern California because it's ACE, Caltrain, VTA light rail, VTA bus, Capitol Corridor, right? High speed rail and now BART. So that is part of the overall DISC effort. And I believe that was what was behind that decision was that that would be the major transit hub and the most feasible spot for an airport connector.
I did just want to chime in that VTA bus route 60 has a stop on Coleman at Broca. And that route does go to the airport and that stop will remain there. So if folks from the Santa Clara Station would like to get to the airport, they can use route 60 on Coleman.
Does our Assistant, Michael Liu, Assistant Director, Public Works, does he, do you have any comments on the possible vehicular connection between Broca and Benton?
Yeah, I can jump in here.
I'd be familiar with it, you know?
Yeah, not familiar enough as a community, but I, you know, we, it's been brought up before. And, you know, I think a couple of things to consider is that, you know, we do have a station area plan that's going to be working, that plan is working on that is looking at the area as a whole. Although that, that, that contract doesn't include looking at a new connection and what, what that entails. So the council would like that, us to look at that as an option at some point. That would require a study and funding. You're likely looking at an underpass. It's not, you're not, there's not going to be an at-grade station, at-grade crossing with BART coming through there. I mean, with Caltrain, you know, there's no opportunity to, or we wouldn't advise adding any at-grade crossings. I don't think that's going to even be an option with high speed rail coming through. So you're looking at a pretty expensive type of improvement or very costly, you know, upwards of 200, 300 million because you're basically taking a roadway and then you're going underneath tracks and then you have to build walls on either side. So studying that in terms of feasibility is going to be a huge undertaking. And if the council wants us to look at that, that can be discussed at a later date. But I think that's really kind of where that ends up in terms of tonight's discussion, at least for, in my opinion. It's always something that we can study, but it really has to kind of weigh within all the priorities of the city as a whole. And I know Assistant, Chief Manager Manuel Panetta just turned his camera on, so he might want to take words.
Yeah, Manuel, and I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there's discussion on that, that it's discussion during the station area plan, planning and not this particular, the BART project, although they're connected. But is that what you're saying? Manuel, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. No, Michael Liu's answer is correct. I just wanted to add a couple of notes to that, that, and this is based on past experience, looking at what I call great separations, railroad great separations at different cities that I worked. To look at that kind of conceptual level of work and study, just at a conceptual level, to give you some, what the options would be, whether it's feasible or not, what the cost would be. Typically, that would cost you between 300 and $500,000. That's currently an unfunded project. We don't have any funding set aside. It's not funded as part of station area plan. We don't have 300,000 or $400,000 or $100,000 in that. So if that's something the council would want to consider, we probably would have to look at that, the budget process and priority setting to see if that's something that the council will want to consider funding. But based on past experience, I haven't worked on any of this for about six, seven years. Did look at multiple ones when I was in Sunnyvale and looking at Caltrain. Each location was costing just conceptual level options and options, conceptual costs, but between 300,000 and $500,000 to analyze.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Okay, I don't know if the staff, was there any other questions you, you heard from the public that you might want to answer? Or comments you might want to make, Assistant Director Liu? I don't know if, just please. I don't know if, just please pipe in if you, if there's anything you wanna add.
The, the, that's the last piece I wanted to add was to try to directly answer the question regarding funding coming from the federal government. So we are, the city's working with its legislative analysts in terms of, you know, what all that means. And, you know, we're trying to understand what are the opportunities for the city. So it's not just, it's not just connected with this potential project that's being discussed in terms of the connector, but everything. So more to come on that, but, you know, we, if there's funding available for projects that, you know, the city desires, and, you know, staff is gonna be trying to aggressively pursue those. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, that specific funding source, I'm not aware of it, but it's, there's a list of, you know, hundreds that are coming forward in the near future.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much for that. So, all right, so council, this is a study session. So if you'd like to make any final comments on this, now would be the time to do that. Councilmember Jane?
Yeah, I would be very interested in having a presentation from Foster and Partners to talk about the thought process behind the design of the station. And I would like that to be available for the public so that they can participate. I am still advocating for a bike-ped underpass that is sort of separated out from the existing tunnel that's there because that, again, you have a, a sort of a serpentine route through the handicap ramps. And then I know that the design of the station is basically cast in concrete. But I think there's opportunity to improve the skins, the color, maybe add murals to improve the appeal. And then finally, I would like to have some sort of early discussion about kiosks or whatever we can put in that concourse area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you to the public, and thank you to my colleagues for all your comments and concerns. But I do go back to my concern, which is, you know, a lot of the Broca-Benton connection, which I would like to have that study done in the future. And I think that we could probably get some federal money to help do this. And I think that would be kind of a way to connect our city because, you know, I see the BART station, and as the mayor said, it's all working together. It's all, you know, trying to be, I guess you would say, harmonious with each other. Our, this is a centerpiece. This is the centerpiece for our city. I think it's a way to kind of welcome people to our city. At the same time, it's, you know, highlighting, excuse me, highlighting our downtown. So there's, you know, there's a lot of positives to this. And I would like to see kind of that study done at the same time, working with the BART plan. Looking at, you know, I've seen other things, you know, talking about the connectors, connections to an airport, which I agree, you know, that should have been done. I always envisioned like kind of something like a monorail, but, you know, I always dream of things in the future, I guess. But at the same time, you know, I guess what I'm, I, I, I guess some of the things is coming down to, it's coming down to solving traffic problems, getting people to take, to take less car trips. We do need to connect ourselves to that other community that's being built there as well. I, I'd also say that, you know, coming down, it's coming down to, I guess, prior decisions of the past and prior, you know, guidance, you know? Now I'm a new elected, and I see some of the past, you know, decisions. And I'm thinking, well, you know what? I'm someone that is now wanting to make certain planning decisions for the future because I'm going to be living in that future, I'm going to inherit the future. And at the same time, I'm gonna have to pass it on to those who are gonna inherit it after me. So I really wanna have it something that's gonna be remembered. I do agree with Councilmember Jane, you know, about the certain comments about, you know, it feels just suddenly dropped on us, you know, nothing. There's no, I don't think there's been a lot of tender loving care in the design, but I still think, you know, these are the early stages. I do like where we are now. I think we can go a little more. I agree with more about public art and murals. These are kind of steps that we can take to make this kind of an area that is gonna draw people and not just a, a, a pit stop. We wanna be that spot where people, oh, Santa Clara's, Santa Clara Station is the best place to go to. That is the best access points to anything, you know? And like I said, you know, I'm planning stuff for the future, and I'm hearing a lot of the comments are, are from our residents. And it just, it seems that I wanna start doing what people really want, you know, their leaders to do. And so I would like to see as much studies as possible to, I guess, alleviate as many traffic congestion problems, but at the same time, making this station the highlight of our community as well as a highlight in these whole entire Silicon Valley. So, but I do appreciate everything, all the work that's been done in this and all the research that's been done over the years. I mean, this has been going on since I was young myself. So again, I do appreciate all the work, and I hope to see that we can, you know, figure out a, a better solution to solve this BART station in the future. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Chahal?
Thank you. Thank you for all the comments from the residents, and they were very valid in a way. Like, one thing I would like to point out that when we are trying to help mobility with this station, I would again say that traffic, mobility, and last mile travel should be given. This is time we can plan all that, all those details, basically. And VTA City and everyone can play a role. And we should be planning these things, as Councilmember Becker mentioned. We should be planning all these things at one time right, right now so that the future can be better for us. And I would again request that whatever leeway we have in modifying the station design with all the input from the residents, as the resident did mention, I think Jonathan did mention, there was a lot of input given, but that was not looked at. So whatever way we can, within the given circumstances, if we can incorporate those suggestions in making a design improvements, that would be really helpful because this station will be here for many, 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 many years. And we wanna make sure that we incorporate all the feedback from our residents. And how we can do that with additional funding or within the existing scope of the work? Because it's a massive project, we can, I think we have some tweaks we can do, and that's the main goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
Yes, thank you. After hearing a lot of the comments from the public, it does seem that there are a number of issues that the public has that I, I feel they, they need to feel like they've been heard. They need to feel like they've been addressed. I've heard that public input was, was given, but not really listened to. And that's my concern. I, I, I hear a lot of comments about, well, this project is here because of the rail yard. And whether that's true or not, there's enough of a feeling that this is the case that I, I do feel that we should have a better design. Again, as some of the other council members have, have alluded to, have mentioned, this is going to be one of the, the, the things that Santa Clara will be known for. I mean, for people who are not even interested in Santa Clara, Santa Clara will be put on the map because we've got a BART station. I think that rail yard is a, a, a main point, but, you know, everything else shouldn't seem like it's an afterthought. You know, I've heard Rob say that we could have a better design, innovative visionary design, actually incorporating views and elements of the existing area, like the historic train station. I, I am concerned about the, the access, about the ups and downs. I heard the, I heard some of the, you know, some of the mitigations that the VTA put, mentioned about it's not really that long, it's not really that much up and down. But I think it needs to feel natural. And I'm gonna take a, a trip to the Millbrae Transfer Station. I do, I am a Caltrain rider, and I wanna take a look at that and see what, what the issues are. I, I don't actually remember getting off or taking the Millbrae Transfer Station, but I, I would like to know what the issues are. And again, the question that I always ask students is, can we do better than that? I would like to make this not feel like it's an afterthought. And I would, you know, I would like a great design that people find it easy and joyful to come to. At the same time, there's the issues of being an end-of-line station and a maintenance facility, issues around the unhoused. I mean, I feel like all these issues, even if we don't look at them now, they will, they will come up because that's the reality, and they will come up when this station is implemented or during the implementation of this station. And I feel that we should, we should think about them now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council members who hasn't spoken? Anybody else wanna make a comment? Okay, I just wanted to say I, I wanna thank the VTA staff for their presentation tonight. Tocas, Bernice, Erica, everyone for your presentation tonight, and our city staff for being involved in this. I think what we've heard that the design has, the, the station has been designed. We heard that a few times, and that changing the design of the station causes a, a, a snowballing effect on, on the rest of the, the BART project. But I think going forward, let's look at changes that we can make and decisions that we can make as a community, and how we can work with, with VTA to, to, you know, better prepare this station for our city and what works best for us. Let's look at the areas around the station that we have more control over in terms of making it attractive, having less traffic, accommodating our, our bicycles and pedestrians, and making it visually more attractive, working with VTA to do that. But I, I'm not sure that we have a lot of say at this point into what the facility looks like in terms of the design. I would like to follow up with VTA to have either a study session or a, a community, a community meeting with Foster and Partners to talk about why the station was designed the way it was. I think it's important to have the people that designed it explain to the community why they did what they did. So whether it's a, you know, a study session at a city council meeting or a, or an organized community meeting near, you know, near, at, or near the station, I think that would be our next step and would be important. And I'm hoping our staff can work with the VTA staff to accommodate that. I think it worked well in San Jose and could work well here in Santa Clara. So I think that, that is important. What is important is getting the station here in Santa Clara and, you know, providing that additional transportation opportunities for our residents here in the city and our businesses here in the city. I think it's, it's important that, you know, we supported this, we voted for this. We've been waiting for this, and it's a, you know, it's time that, that it, that it actually happens. And it looks like we're getting close to this actually happening. So again, thank everyone, I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight and participating and giving us just a, a tremendous amount of information, which we haven't had in, in over a year. And as it gets closer, we get more and more of the details. I think VTA staff, what you're hearing from us in Santa Clara is that we're a very engaged community when it comes to the station area plan and, and BART. And we wanna be involved, and we care about the station and being successful and safe and attractive and inviting to the city of Santa Clara. So we will continue to be involved. And, and, and I know, you know, as a member of the VTA board, that Santa Clara will now be a voting member of the board. It's time for Santa Clara to, to take over as a voting member and not just an alternate. So we will be very involved in this. So again, thank you very much, and we'll let you now go for the evening as we continue on with our agenda. All right, the next item we have.